Good morning, everybody. Good morning, everybody. Good morning again, everybody. It is now ten twenty A.M. We have nine members present, winning ten for a forum. Ms. Galanter, Mr. Pacheco, Mr. Weiss, your presence is needed in council chambers. Good morning, everybody. Buenos dias a todos. Bienvenidos al Councilo de las Ciudades. Bienvenidos a la Cámara del Consilio. Bienvenidos a la Junta del Consilio de las Ciudades para hoy martes, 25 de 2002. El Consilio de las Ciudades se junta todos los miércoles a las diez de la mañana. Las reuniones del Consilio están abiertas para el público. También podemos ser vistos en la estación de cable, canal treinta y cinco. Podemos ser vistos por el webcast en la página de la ciudad o por el teléfono del Consilio. ¿Podría llamarte al mundo? Ms. Galanter, Garcia, Grul, Han, Holden, Lavonch, Miskowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes. Para el presidente Thomas Weiss, Sain Padilla, diez miembros presentes y un foro presidente. Gracias, señor Clur, este es el martes, la primera reunión de la semana. Tenemos un saludo a nuestra bandera en un momento de inspiración. Me gustaría reconocer en este punto al miembro del Consulado, Ms. Kowski.
Gracias, señor Presidente. Permítanme invitar al podium al hermano Brahmananda, que es del Centro de Realización Self-realidad en los Estados Pacíficos, un área que está abierta al público para la tranquilidad y momentos, como todos aquí, de inspiración y tranquilidad en nuestras vidas. Y les preguntaré primero si el hermano Brahmananda quiera darle el plegio de la lealtad. Y luego tendremos un momento de inspiración. Si puedo preguntar, ¿quieren que se ponga? Comencemos. Le plego la lealtad a la bandera de los Estados Unidos de América y a la República por la cual se encuentra una nación bajo Dios, indivisible, con libertad y justicia para todos.
Gracias, miembro del Consulado. Soy el hermano Brahmananda, un ministro y ministra de la Realización Self-realidad. Somos una organización internacional con sede en la cima de Washington, fundada por Paramasyogananda. Nuestro objetivo principal como organización es encorajar a la gente de todas las faiths a pasar cada día en oración, meditación, comunión. Y enseñamos técnicas de yoga de meditación para ayudar a interiorizar nuestra conciencia para que podamos sentir la presencia de Dios en la paz interior. Ahora, operamos en varios distritos del Consulado. En Washington, principalmente estamos en el distrito de Ed Reyes, con parte de nuestra propiedad en Eric Garcetti. La próxima semana será en el distrito de Nick Pacheco, una pequeña parte de nuestra propiedad en Ed Reyes. Nuestro templo de Hollywood está en la plaza Sunset, opuesto al hospital Kaiser. Estamos en el distrito de Tom Lavagna, pero la próxima semana será en Eric Garcetti. Finalmente, nuestro templo de la cueva Lake Shrine y el centro de la Oshrim está en la parte occidental de la plaza Sunset. Está en el distrito de Cindy Miskowski y la próxima semana permanecerá en el distrito de Cindy Miskowski. Y te agradecemos por la oportunidad de hablar hoy. Algunos días atrás, estaba hablando con nuestro presidente, Sri Diamata, que se considera santo por muchas personas, incluyendo a mí mismo. Y ella me comentó que desde el 11 de septiembre, ha estado pensando profundamente en cuatro temas que cree que realmente ayudarán a la gente si solo lo siguen. Y me gustaría mencionarlos brevemente. El primero es amar a Dios. Vimos de Dios, es nuestro creador, nuestra madre, nuestro padre. Podemos pasar un tiempo solo con Dios cada día, solo unos minutos. Puedo añadir enormemente nuestro progreso espiritual, nuestro sentido de quién somos. El siguiente es servicio, y esto es donde todos ustedes están sobresalientes en sus vidas. Y te agradecemos por el sentimiento divino en otros y tu voluntad de ayudar a otras personas. El tercer es coraje. No podemos pasar por eso. Siempre hay un poco de miedo en nuestras vidas y tenemos que pasar por eso, levantarnos y decir "Lo haré". Finalmente, la fe en Dios es tan importante, eso es lo que da el mayor coraje. Me gustaría terminar con la oración. Concluyendo con la oración favorita del fundador, Paramasyogananda. Padre celestial, pedimos tu especial bendición en esta ciudad de Los Ángeles, la ciudad de tus ángeles y en este Consilio de la Ciudad. Guíenlos siempre con tu amor, tu paz, tu armonía. Y que tu amor brille siempre en el santuario de nuestra devoción. Que podamos despertar tu amor en todos los corazones. Gracias.
Muchas gracias, señor Clur. Primero, por favor, el primer asunto. La aprobación de los minutos. Mr. Pacheco, el segundo. El comandante, la resolución para la aprobación. Mr. Lavonch, el segundo. Antes de proceder con la audiencia, tenemos una presentación programada para hoy. Hay un evento especial esta noche. Me gustaría reconocer al miembro del Consulado, Garcia, que se unirá al jefe de la ciudad de Los Ángeles, James Han.
Muchas gracias, señor Presidente. Para el público y colegas, tenemos a uno de los gigantes de la sociedad americana aquí con nosotros hoy en el Consulado de la Ciudad. Robert Johnson, o Bob como se conoce, es el fundador de la televisión de la entertainment negra. Y esta noche, desde el famoso Teatro Kodak en Hollywood, en la plaza de Hollywood, los premios BET se celebrarán allí hoy. La proclamación que está ante nosotros recibe en gran detalle los grandes logros de este hombre, las contribuciones que ha hecho a la sociedad americana, a los medios y a la industria de entretenimiento aquí en este país. Permítanme compartir con ustedes algunos de los highlights. Robert L. Johnson es el fundador y jefe ejecutivo de la televisión de la entertainment negra, BET, un subsidiario de Viacom y el líder de la media africano-americana y empresa de entretenimiento en los Estados Unidos. Ha tenido un éxito financiero y estratégico extraordinario desde su creación en 1980. Antes de comenzar BET, Johnson fue desde 1976 hasta 1979 vicepresidente de Relaciones gubernamentales para la Asociación Nacional de Cable y Telecomunicaciones. También sirve en los siguientes board, y esta es una lista impresionante, Airways de Aeronave, Hotels Hilton, General Mills, Fundo Negro United College, Asociación Nacional de Cable y Televisión y Instituto de Film Americano. También es miembro del Consejo de gobernadores para la Halla de la fama Rock y Roll en Cleveland, Ohio, y el Instituto Brookings. Ha recibido innumerables premios, demasiados para enumerar aquí hoy, pero algunos de ellos incluyen los premios de la televisión de 1997 y de la Habana y de la Asociación de Cable. Los premios de la Campania de la Tama de la Cámara de la Televisión, la Campania de la Vision de la Magazine de 2020, que la lista lo incluye como uno de los veinte más influyentes en la industria de la televisión y el Premio de imagen de la ACP. También ha recibido el premio de la Iglesia de los Derechos de la Women's Political Caucus, el premio de los alumnos destacados de la Universidad de Princeton, no duda, el miembro del Consulado Weiss estará feliz de saberlo. Y el premio del presidente de la Asociación Nacional de Cable y Telecomunicaciones. BET ha pionado un género entero en la televisión con su programa de 24 horas que ataca a los consumidores africanos-americanos y ahora alcanza casi 72 millones de casas estadounidenses y más del 95% de todas las casas de cable negra. También ha evolucionado en tecnología digital de primera mano a través de la umbrella de redes digitales BET. Y en 1998, Johnson estableció BET Pictures y BET Arabesque Films para producir y vender reproducciones de películas afroestadounidenses. Es con gran alegría que presento esta proclamación firmada por todo el Consulado y el jefe de esta ciudad, James K. Han. Me gustaría invitar al jefe a avanzar también para decir algunas palabras al miembro del Consulado Ridley Thomas, si quisiera hacerlo también. Gracias, señor Presidente, miembros del Consulado. Es verdaderamente un gran día en Los Ángeles tener los premios BET en Hollywood, en el nuevo Teatro Kodak. Robert L. Johnson ciertamente es un visionario, alguien que vio la promesa y el potencial de la televisión de la televisión, especialmente lo que BET era. Traer un punto de vista, traer noticias con diferentes perspectivas a la comunidad afroestadounidense, en realidad, la comunidad más amplia de América. Y esa especie de voz debía ser oída y sigue siendo oída. Y creo que ese tipo de visión, ese tipo de espíritu de pioneros es lo que hace que América sea grande, y estamos muy orgullosos de tener este evento aquí y de tener al señor Johnson aquí. Y me uniré al Consejo de la Ciudad en proclamar el día BET en Los Ángeles.
Señor Presidente, señor alcalde, señor Garcetti. En Robert Johnson tenemos creatividad, ingeniería y industria epitomizada. Está punctuado con un sentido cultural específico como BET ha causado a la nación tener una visión de la cultura y la vida afroestadounidense. De hecho, ayuda a hacer que esta nación sea lo que puede y debe ser. Así que es mi opinión que Bob Johnson ha hecho una contribución tremenda a la educación de los estadounidenses de todos los ríos a través de exponerlos a este grupo etnico en particular y sus contribuciones a la grandeza de esta república. Así que creo que a cargo de los residentes de la ciudad de Los Ángeles, queremos homenajear y saludar a Bob Johnson en este día, y eso es de hecho a cargo de una ciudad agradecida.
El 25 de junio de 2002 es el día BET. Felicitaciones, Bob, y también a Deborah Lee, que viene de BET también. Felicitaciones.
El señor Pacheco.
Gracias, presidente Padilla. Oh, le doy a la lista al consejero. Bueno, dijo eso tan fluently, puede estar corriendo por la oficina, probablemente. ¿Sería ocho o diez? Okay, ¿por qué no? Venga, todos los demás están corriendo. Quince. El señor Johnson, quiero homenajearle, en primer lugar, por haber sido un piloto en la... Obviamente, he visto BET en la televisión y realmente creo que estás haciendo un trabajo de calidad, proporcionando una gran servicio no solo a la ciudad de Los Ángeles, sino a todo el país. Y también esperamos unirse a ti con CTV, como sabes, que es un gran esfuerzo para traer un canal latino a la televisión. Pero solo quiero homenajearle personalmente por abrir la puerta para todos nosotros que buscamos más diversidad y personas de color frente a la cámara y detrás de la cámara. Gracias.
El señor Labange.
Gracias, señor Presidente, miembros del Consejo. No hay nada mejor que la entretenimiento de todos, que la televisión negra. Felicidades. También sé que cuando era joven, otro joven llamado Travis Smiley estaba trabajando aquí como consejero. Y él montó la escalera y ahora está en otros áreas de la entretenimiento, pero tu red fue la que me dio la pista. Así que eso también es alentador porque tantas personas grandes han venido a estas alcaldías y es un placer tenerlos en Los Ángeles en este gran tributo esta noche en el Codaq Theater en Hollywood y Highland. Espero que disfrutes de un caminato por el motor de allí también. Disfruta de nuestra ciudad y tu visita. Muchas gracias. Sostenido, olvidé mencionar. Bobette es un angelino de la escuela de universidad de West Los Angeles.
Muchas gracias, presidente Padilla, al alcalde Han, al consejero Garcetti, al consejero Thomas y a otros miembros del Consejo y amigos. Estoy honrado de estar aquí, por supuesto, y de estar en Los Ángeles para este evento esta noche. Me gustaría presentarle a usted la persona que realmente y verdaderamente gobierna BET. Tengo el derecho a tomar todos los créditos, ella hace todo el trabajo. Es la presidenta y jefe operadora, la señora Deborah Lee. De hecho, Deborah está tan emocionada de estar aquí cuando hablamos de breve charla con el presidente Padilla. Dijo, bienvenido a Los Ángeles, deleite de que nos ve aquí. Espero que traiga el show aquí cada año. Deborah le hizo la mano y dijo, hecho el acuerdo, estaré aquí cada año. Cuando estábamos caminando, me recordaba a ella, ella hizo la misma promesa a Mike Bloomberg en Nueva York. Pero estamos absolutamente honrados de estar aquí porque lo que hacemos es lo que Los Ángeles es famoso, y eso es la creatividad e inteligencia del entorno de entretenimiento y comunidad artística aquí. Y BET se ha casado con ese tremendo activo y lo distribuye en todo el país y, de hecho, en muchos lugares en todo el mundo para mostrar la vitalidad y la creatividad de la comunidad de entretenimiento afroestadounidense a audiencias de todo el país y de todo el mundo. Y pensamos que es adecuado que nuestro show de premios debería estar aquí en la capital de la entretenimiento. Debería estar en el Codaq Theater y debería representar a todos nuestros espectadores el entusiasmo de Los Ángeles. Y lo harán en la multitud de artistas talentosos y actores que estarán allí esta noche. Estamos honrados de que estaremos presentando el premio de humanitario a menos que Muhammad Ali. Un individuo por su coraje y logro se encuentra como un gigante en todo el mundo. También estaremos reconociendo a uno de los pioneros de los grupos R&amp;B que jamás han venido a la escena, Earth, Wind &amp; Fire. Y ellos también han establecido el escenario para muchos de los jóvenes artistas que siguen sus pasos. Y finalmente, algo que estoy contento de hacer es, voy a dar por primera vez el premio de la presidenta a menos que el doctor Bobby Jones, el Bobby Jones Gospel Show. Y aquellos de ustedes que conocen algo sobre la música afroestadounidense saben que la música gospel es verdaderamente el alma de la música afroestadounidense. Así que estamos absolutamente honrados de estar aquí. El apoyo que recibimos de todas las agencias de la comunidad, en particular la agencia de la policía ha sido absolutamente estrecho. Han recibido una cobertura tremenda de la prensa y estamos esperando a un evento muy emocionante y maravilloso. Y no puedo, como dije antes, pensar en un lugar mejor para nosotros mostrar lo que es verdaderamente un producto que exportas en todo el mundo, y esa es la creatividad de esta comunidad. Así que, felicidades a todos los que han sido parte de esto en tu comunidad, y te agradecemos por tu apoyo y volveremos a estar aquí como prometió Deborah. Gracias.
Gracias, consejero Garcetti, al alcalde Han, al consejero Ridley Thomas. El señor Clerk, procediendo con la agenda. El primer tema es el nueve, una petición de que ese asunto sea continuado hasta el 28 de julio. Los miembros exigen que el tema número nueve continúe sin objeciones. El tema será continuado. El tema número 19 en la agenda regular es un duplicado del tema número 37. Y aunque es un duplicado, no es necesario, el tema 19 puede ser recibido y enviado. Los miembros exigen que el tema número 19 sea continuado sin objeciones. Ese será el orden. El tema número 37 exige que este asunto sea continuado un día hasta el 26 de junio. Los miembros exigen que el tema número 37 continúe sin objeciones. El tema 37 es continuado. Señor Presidente, en la agenda regular, los temas 1 a 6 son ordenanzas, y también temas que son conocidos en la audiencia pública. Los temas 1 a 6 son ordenanzas. Anticipamos que los miembros están presentes, pero todos los ordenanzas están detenidos en el escritorio, esperando la llegada, creo, de Miss Galanter para permitirnos votos oportunistas en ordenanzas. Los miembros también anunciaron el comienzo del debate. Tendremos su atención por solo un segundo. Este siendo la última semana de la temporada fiscal, todos los asuntos van a seguir adelante. Todos los asuntos van a seguir adelante, empezando con hoy. Okay, así que los temas 1 a 6 están detenidos en el escritorio. No tengo petición de que el público se oiga sobre esos temas. Así que para los temas 1 a 6, definiremos la audiencia pública abierta y cerrada, y esperaremos a Miss Galanter para un voto real sobre esos temas. Señor Presidente, el tema número siete es una ordenanza que permanecerá en el escritorio. El tema número ocho y diez a diez, o temas que han sido recibidos en la audiencia pública. Las audiencias públicas han sido recibidas sobre estos temas. Tienen una tarjeta en el 17, que se requiere de abrir la audiencia pública. ¿Quieren llamar a los especiales, temas ocho a diez a diez? ¿Alguien más especiales? No estamos allí todavía, señor Burson. ¿Alguien más especiales, temas ocho a diez a diez? No hay más especiales, señor Clerk. Por favor, abre la lista sobre esos temas. Por favor, cierre la lista y tabule el voto. Los temas están aprobados. El siguiente tema, por favor. El tema número 18 es la aceptación de un contrato de ingresos de impuestos y anticipaciones. El CAO está actualmente revisando los números sobre este asunto, así que este asunto debe permanecer en el escritorio hasta que tengamos la información de la oficina administrativa de la ciudad. Okay, el tema 18 deberá permanecer en el escritorio. Los temas 20 a 36, en la agenda regular, temas que han sido recibidos en la audiencia pública. El tema número 24, se requiere de una decisión, el reporte se ha entregado sin recomendación de comité. El tema 24, se llama especial. Los temas 20 y 21 son ordenanzas, se los deja en el escritorio, señor Burson.
El orden de la mesa, señor Presidente. Mi comprensión es que están fusionando 19 y 37 y continuando hasta mañana. Pero tenemos gente que ha viajado de Granada Hills que están aquí para testificar en esto. Y me pregunto si no podríamos, de alguna manera, antes de entrar en los especiales, escucharles para que puedan volver. ¿Es posible?
Creo que es posible. No hay objeciones. No hay ninguno. Haremos eso. Vamos a pasar la agenda primero, llamamos especiales primero, pero tomaremos un comentario sobre esos temas antes de tomar acción sobre los temas llamados especiales. Señor Clerk, 20 y 21 son ordenanzas, se los deja en el escritorio. 24 es especial, esperando una decisión. Señor Weiss. El 5 fue llamado especial por el señor Weiss, y tenemos una tarjeta también. ¿Alguien más especiales, temas 22, 23 y 25 a 36? ¿Algunos especiales? No hay ninguno, señor Clerk. Por favor, abre la lista sobre los temas. Por favor, cierre la lista y tabule el voto. Están aprobados. Señor Presidente, ahora tenemos a dos miembros que deben de considerar las ordenanzas. Vamos a considerar todas las ordenanzas, el tema 7, 20 y 21. ¿Quieren llamar a alguno de los ordenanzas especiales? No hay ninguno. No tengo ninguna petición de que el público se oiga sobre esos temas. La audiencia pública requiere de... Señor Clerk, por favor, abre la lista sobre las ordenanzas. Por favor, cierre la lista y tabule el voto. Están aprobados. En la agenda regular, los temas 38 y 39, o temas que han sido recibidos en la audiencia pública, no se han hecho. El 38 y 39 no tienen petición de miembros del público para hacerlo y dos en nuestros temas deben ser al público, abierto y cerrado. Miembros sin objeciones, considerando que el 38 tiene como parte de la agenda. Miembros que decidan asuntos especiales. 38, 39. No hay ninguno, señor Clerk. Por favor, abre la lista. Cierre la lista y tabule el voto. Están aprobados. Señor Presidente, eso trae al primer asunto llamado especial. Miembros que exigen... Nos escuchemos a los miembros del público que quieran dirigir el consejo, temas 19 y 37. 19 ha sido recibido y enviado, 37, el mismo tema continúa mañana. Pero escuchemos al señor Wade Hunter, seguido por Mary Edwards y Becky Ben Dixon. Por favor, adelante en este momento. Señor Hunter.
Buenas tardes. Lo siento que van a escuchar esto mañana porque voy a hacer este hermoso discurso y tal vez se olviden. Soy Mary Edwards y represento a tres grupos de la Comunidad San Fernando Valley, la Coalición Norte, Laser, que es Landfill Alternatives, Save Environmental Resources, que es un grupo que se une de todos los diferentes campos de la tierra de California, y también la Old Ladies Women's Club, que hace otras cosas además de la playa. Están muy interesadas en el reciclaje. Quería traerles hoy la importancia de no solo financiar el reciclaje a través de esto y cumplir con el 939, pero también el hecho de que, en la forma que está escrito ahora en los billetes de basura, todos, a menos que tengan una carga reciclada, pagarán exactamente lo mismo. Y nos gustaría ver que las instalaciones de reciclaje, cualquier cosa que vaya a una instalación de reciclaje es exento de eso. Esto es muy, muy importante porque tienes allí muchas, muchas instalaciones de reciclaje, creo que más de 150, que están dispuestas o más, que están dispuestas y capaces y permitidas ahora mismo para tomar reciclaje y quieren más de los flujos de basura. Pero el problema es que si lo tiras a un campo de tierra y le pones un tarp al final del día, es fácil y muy barato en el corto plazo. Pero, por supuesto, en el largo plazo, arruina el tablea del agua, explica recursos naturales que son muy, muy importantes. Y así es muy corto plazo, es barato en el corto plazo. Pero en el largo plazo, si va a una reciclaje, nuestros recursos se reutilizan. Así que realmente queremos promover el reciclaje. Y una forma de hacer eso es tener el pago de franquicia aplicado solo a las cosas que vayan a la tierra directamente. Pero si va a una recicladora primero, deberían ser exentos. Es un concepto muy simple. Y sé que hay algunos, ha habido algunos argumentos sobre cuán difícil sería auditar, pero cuando no hay tantas empresas para auditar y ya tienen que reportar las estadísticas que van separadamente, pueden... Puede ser hecho, puede ser hecho fácilmente, es directo, es simple, y puedes hacer con el pulgar de la mano mucho más de reciclaje. Porque las instalaciones ya están ahí y la empatía en nuestra sociedad es generalmente para ir, aumentar los costos. Y la empatía en nuestra sociedad es para ir, donde los costos son más baratos. Así que espero que lo hagan. Sé que no tengo tiempo, pero estoy muy vieja. De todos modos, por favor, considere esto.
Muchas gracias, señor Hunter, Miss Becky Ben Dixon, seguido por Joan Edwards y Judy Gregory.
Gracias. Mi nombre es Wayne Hunter. Soy de la Coalición Norte. Lo disculpo por no tener mi discurso listo. Generalmente tengo bastante tiempo para prepararme antes de que me escuchen. Esto es una clase de sorpresa para mí. Mis preferencias son hablar contigo mañana cuando escuches estos asuntos de nuevo, pero ya que nos han dado la oportunidad, me gustaría aprovecharla. Estamos en favor de la factura de reciclaje porque, o el pago de franquicia, porque pensamos que ayudará al reciclaje. Sin embargo, tenemos algunos preocupaciones sobre cómo se trata. Creemos que debe basarse en la tonelada dispuesta y no en billetes de basura. Por un lado, tienes el Bureau de Sanitización y los tres grandes, que serían BFI slash Alrededor de la Basura, la gestión de basuras y la República. Por otro lado, quieren billetes de basura. Por otro lado, tienes a los ambientalistas y los recicladores y organizaciones como la organización de propietarios de hogares que apoyan la factura basada en toneladas dispuestas. Así que tienes estas entidades. Ahora, los recicladores son obviamente para el reciclaje, los ambientalistas son obviamente para el reciclaje, y la gente en general, como un todo, en Los Ángeles, preferiría tenerlo en las toneladas dispuestas porque esto es lo que encoraja a la gente a ir a estos recicladores si es como una factura. it on the tons disposed, because this is what will encourage people to go to these recyclers if it's like feeless. So alls I wanted to say is, you have to weigh this. We're over here, and the Bureau of Sanitation, Allied Waste, Waste Management and Republic are in favor of gross receipts, and that should give you pause and make you think, why would they want it? Because it's in their advantage and it's not any advantage of recycling. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Becky Bendixson.
Good morning. My name is Becky Bendixson, and I reside in the Knoll community of Granada Hills. I appear here today to ask that you adopt motion thirty-seven B before you that would encourage recycling of materials that would otherwise be put in the dumps in the valley. Our community has been dumped on too much for far too long a time. Current council members Galanter, Ridley Thomas, Mizukowski and Pacheco voted to make Sunshine Dump, a contradiction in terms, the largest dump in the United States. Thank you council members Holden, Burnson and Padilla for your support in voting against opening this dump. The governing body of which your members has allowed over twenty oil wells to be drilled next to this dump, which is less than a mile from the Cascades where your water flows and the NWD Water Filtration Treatment Facility is located. You've allowed the residents of Castag, Palmdale, Lancaster, Santa Clarita and points in between to fill Belvoa Boulevard each day and night, which has had its four lanes expanded to six lanes. Under Belvoa Boulevard, the only way out of the neighborhood for many people, you've allowed oil, gas, pipelines and a major water trunk line to be placed, two of which ruptured in the nineteen-four earthquake. You've allowed the storage of chlorine tanks without plans to evacuate residents during emergency situations should they leak, and dynamite to be stored near the dump. You've allowed noisy firing police range in our neighborhood and noisy stage two airplanes, not allowed other airports in the area to fly, even out of Van Nuys Airport over Belvoa Boulevard. The dump continues to release toxic fumes. I had the unpleasant experience of breathing such fumes, a combination of sewer and chemical smell, while visiting as a resident near the dump this past Saturday. How the children at the nearby Van Gogh Elementary School will fare is a disturbing thought. BFI was required to set up a monitoring system over eight months ago at the nearby Van Gogh Elementary School, but when I inquired what the results had been reported, the answer was none to the affected school. We now know radioactive waste has been dumped in our landfills along with body parts previously illegally dumped at Sunshine Dump. And now we find out the one eighteen freeway that runs right down the middle of Granada Hills will be used to transport radioactive waste from the nuclear power plants on its way to Yucca Mountain. What's next, I ask? Little under the majority of residents in the valley feel secession is our only hope to survive. Please give us this little crumb from your table. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Judy Gregory and Joan Edwards.
Good morning, members of the council. My name is Judy Gregory, and I'm here representing Solid Waste Recycling and Disposal. I'm also the LA County elected board member to the California Resource Recovery Association, which is the largest state recycling association in the United States. This is a very important issue. This issue goes beyond collecting fees for the city. It speaks to recycling and waste reduction, and what the city of LA does will be heard mimicked probably throughout the United States. I really want to commend Councilman Lavage and the public works committee for supporting and listening to environmentalists and to the stakeholders in this issue and for putting forward a proposal that addresses our needs and concerns, and I really urge the city council to support item thirty-seven B and tonnage-based fee on disposal. It will create incentives to reduce wasting, increase recycling and overall a huge benefit to the city of Los Angeles and all of its residents. Any other way just doesn't accomplish anything other than collecting fees, and the stakeholders here are willing to ante up, are willing to pay fees, but we want to also do something positive for the environment at the same time, and we hope you'll support us and support the businesses and recycling companies, waste hauling companies that have tremendous amount of money into an infrastructure that supports recycling. Thank you.
My name is Joan Edwards. Thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I will not be able to be here tomorrow, but I did send a memorandum to each council office. First, I want to reiterate what Judy Gregory said. This is about whether or not you're willing to encourage recycling in the city of Los Angeles, and the original ordinance did not do that or did it far too little. The recommendation by Councilman Lavage does just the opposite. It recognizes that there's more than eight hundred thousand tons of recycling capacity in this city that is not being fully utilized because Sunshine Canyon is cheaper. And yet, the Bureau of Sanitation has said, give no reward to anyone who uses those facilities, because instead of having twenty different little piles, mixed paper here and metal here and wood there, it allows the material to be combined and sent to a facility that can sort it. Sorted it rates it above to eighty-five percent. The Bureau has said, doesn't matter. It's equal to going to a landfill and should have the fee. This is unfair. You've also been told it's too hard to audit tonnage. Too hard. Twenty haulers in the city of Los Angeles transport ninety percent of every ton. Twenty auditors have been proposed, or at least we've been told that they're recommended. That means one city employee to audit one company for twelve months full-time makes no sense to any of us, and we respect city employees far too much. I urge you to consider all the ramifications of the original proposed ordinance and the modification proposed by Councilman Lavage's office, and please vote for recycling and not for disposing in landfills. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes today's public comment. Thank you all for being here, and you heard us announce previous year testimony. Item number nineteen, which is really duplicated by thirty-seven, is as you can file. Item thirty-seven will be continued until tomorrow, but we'll take into account your testimony today. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Point of information, Mr. President. Will people be allowed to speak tomorrow on item thirty-seven if they choose?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Mr. Pacheco.
I'm not sure where staff is, but I requested a report during budget and finance deliberations that was going to either by council, district or area planning commission break down who was going to be impacted, who was going to be paying these fees, and I haven't received that report. So I just want that report generated by tomorrow. If it's not generated by tomorrow, I'm not going to vote on it.
Please hold staff. Please be advised of Mr. Pacheco's request. Any other questions on these items? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, next item, please. Item number seventeen called special by Councilmember Garcetti. It's an item for which public hearing hasn't been held. Mr. Garcetti. Item seventeen.
If we can hear the public comments first.
There's a question. Is there any objection? Seeing none, Ms. Judith Raskin. Let's go forward at this time on item number seventeen.
I'm the chairperson of the Echo Park Community Action Committee, which for six years has followed the trials and tribales of the Glendale Carter Improvement Project. For the first five and a half years, we vigorously opposed certain elements of it, but early this year, sufficient changes were made to the project that the community feels that it will support it, and that's what we're doing today. We do ask for one thing. We would like the motion to be amended to include an instruction to the LA Department of Transportation to work more closely with the MTA on this project, since it is one of two projects, two transportations of projects which are side by side, and we want to make certain that they work synergistically. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This concludes fellow comments on item. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Judy, for coming down here today. This was, for many of you, were sworn in, I think, my first day in office, and issues that came before us, and I want to praise the Department of Transportation for their outreach, their tireless hours and their creative thinking really when we, from the community, spoke very loudly, clearly about what we did not want, and you came back with some very innovative solutions and had real time to allow community buy-in and for us in the community to feel more secure about the plan. And I think the one that came forward is one that improves the area for the folks that actually live there, as well as for the transportation element as well, and that's an important step, and I want to, I can't thank DOT enough for that hard work. I do want to add as an amendment what Ms. Raskin added, that if we can instruct the DOT to work closely with the MTA on the Terminus Project, I believe is what you're referring to, the Glendale Terminus Project, which is just up the street, and there is a clear linkage between the two, so if we can make sure that we have that included as well, I would urge everyone's support. The Terminus Project is over ten million dollars that Javier Becerra got out of the federal government to approve the terminus of the Glendale Freeway, and we're looking at it as an opportunity to potentially add more green space to the area along the sort of field and the flyover, and the community spoke very loudly, clearly they don't want the destruction of that bridge, though, which symbolized the victory over the extension of the freeway many years ago. So we want to make sure that as we look at how that's going to be spent, that we have DOT coordinate with the MTA very closely, so I urge your support.
I just asked a question, Mr. President. When you say there was some talk about stopping the freeway at some point, is that still in this report?
It is, it is stopped, as you know where it is, but you mean further back on the five or something like that? That is one of the options the community has talked about for some time.
There's a report?
Not in this report, because this is further down on Glendale Boulevard. This is just getting DOT to when we go to that next phase to make sure that they work closely with MTA, because MTA is the one that's overseeing after Caltrans.
Right. I just want to say I compliment you, Councilmember Garcia, sitting in your work here in a very difficult problem. When freeway systems were built and not completed, traffic leaves freeways that go through neighborhoods. So they crisscross all through the neighborhoods, so it's very important to try to allow the traffic to flow safely through the neighborhood. Allow the people to cross the street safely, but also to allow traffic to go through. I just want to make sure, we're not trying to close that access point, but to make it safer for the people in the neighborhood, safer for the motor public who come in through Glendale Boulevard and then leave the area there, so in some account. And as you mentioned, the top in the sort of field, what they could do there to get a little more would be great, and even some restriping to allow some things to flow a little bit easier, but all the people that walk on the public streets of Los Angeles, we try to keep big traffic on bigger streets and make it safe for people to cross and keep it out of neighborhoods so that they don't cut through the neighborhoods. Thank you, and congratulations to you and your community organization. Mr. Burnson.
Yes, just a little history that Tom didn't give you. First of all, I'm happy to support this, the fact I worked with Jackie originally to start this project. But what you have to understand is that the reason that the two freeway doesn't continue all the way to Santa Monica is because people didn't want to have a freeway. And now they are stuck with the results of their actions, or at least the people who are here now are stuck with the results of their actions. And as we continue to get more and more population and more and more cars, you will find out that some of these nimbyism situations create a lot of problems for people who are here now, and this is one of those cases. So we can move forward with this, and we should, because it's the best we can do. But had that freeway been built, as it should have been built, it would have alleviated traffic and congestion, not only on our city streets, but on our other freeways as well.
Mr. Lavage.
I was trying to reform what Mr. Burnson said, because I forgot to mention something. The city of Los Angeles, as you may or may not know, designed the Hollywood Freeway in the early fifties all the way out to Barham. It was our designers who did that, and in Vermont Avenue and the Hollywood Freeway, it wasn't because Caltrans, at that time the State Division of Highways, was so green that they wanted to have that beautiful open space. It was there that the interchange was going to go between the Beverly Hills Connector and the Glendale Connector. But you make a very good point because of the deletion of a freeway or a stop freeway, just like you had the problem with the Long Beach freeway on in the El Dorado community, the seven-ten, traffic does through neighborhoods, and Las Feliz Boulevard is severely impacted because of this, which did do. But now we're going to try to make some changes, and also we're going to try to include a more call pooling or people to move, encourage them to do that. But anyway, thank you very much, Mr. President, Mr. Burnson and Mr. Garcetti and his community.
Are the members wishing to be recognized? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk. Mr. President, there is an amended motion as before, but Mr. Garcetti is an upholding motion. I believe it's, item number seventeen as amended. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. That is approved. Next item, please. Mr. President, item number eighteen. The bids were opened this morning, and the city administrative officer prepared a resolution for council to adopt. Has the resolution been circulated? No, I'm going to read it into the record. There are several bids for the total amount issued on this matter. The winning bidders are as follows. J.P. Morgan, in the amount of fifty million dollars at a true interest cost of one point five six to Goldman Sachs, an amount of bid is by fifty thousand, fifty million dollars at a true interest cost of one point five six nine percent. Bear Stearns for fifty million dollars at a true interest cost of one point five seven four percent. Morgan Stanley, fifty million dollars at a true interest cost of one point five seven eight percent. And J.P. Morgan, fifty million dollars at one point five eight two percent, and Goldman Sachs at eighty-two million six hundred thousand at one point five eight three percent. There is also an ordinance that has been submitted by the city attorney, and that should go for a reading tomorrow. A motion is required from the floor to adopt the resolution today. Is there such a motion? So here a motion from the floor. Mr. Ridley Thomas moves. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved, Mr. Lavage.
Members, just for a quick introduction, what we have here is a great athlete who just retired from volleyball. Megan Prieta, please stand here. Her mother is Terry Alatori for the mayor's office. Megan, stand up. The benefit of Title IX and the work of women's sports, a great athlete from Oregon State, first team all Pac-10, and a great volleyball player, went to play in Europe, which so many people do in the international sports world, and it's a come visit your mother at work day today, so she came down, and we just want to welcome Megan Prieta and congratulate her for her great work as a student. She's going back to get her master's in education and a great work as an athlete and as an inspiration to young women throughout. You join me in welcoming Megan Prieta back to Los Angeles.
Mr. Clerk, next item, please. Item number twenty-four. Motion is required inasmuch as this is submitted without recommendation, and councilmembers buying called this special. Mr. Zine. Mr. Zine in chambers.
Yes, sir. Sir, I'm in the chamber.
Item twenty-four. You have a motion on item twenty-four?
Yes, Mr. President, colleagues. My motion is that there's still many unresolved questions on this matter. I would refer this to information technology and all sorts of personnel. It came out of my committee without a recommendation, and in order for us to bring it back, we're going to have to deny this request. It will have to come back. It has not gone from information technology. It did go through personnel. I had many reservations regarding it, and that's why it was sent before this body without a recommendation. So I would ask that we deny this, and it can go through the process, through personnel and through information technology, because the concern is, many to mention it, I said we would hash it out on the floor of the council, but I think it's more appropriate to deny it at this stage and bring it back through the committee process, but we'd have to deny in order to have that happen. So I would ask that we deny the request, and then we can deal with the information technology agency, do it through the process, through personnel and also through information technology. That would be my request, that we deny.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Mr. Burnson.
You know, I appreciate the diligence of Mr. Zine in dealing with the freeze that we have and so forth, but I just wonder, is this a vital position? Has anybody found out whether this is something, that if we're delaying it, we have to start all over again? And what is the impact going to be? Mr. Zine, maybe you can enlighten us on that before we vote on this.
Well, the problem is, Mr. Burnson, the information technology department has gone through some turmoil and some changes. There are a number of contract renewals that are up there, going on the extensions, there's a concern about the mergers, there's concern about...
So is there a good reason for delaying?
There's a number of issues that are in place, why it's not going through the civil service system. service system, why it's going outside the civil service system. There's a myriad of reasons, or maybe explanations, that I wasn't given adequately.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that we're not routinely sending everything back to committees, not just personnel, but other committees, when some of these things are important for us to provide vital services for the city. Apparently, this is not the case.
In this particular case, there are still personnel within the information technology that can process. There are four contractors at this time within the city. There are a number of contracts.
I respect your diligence.
I would say yesterday in personnel committee, we did approve a number of department requests for a number of issues, and we're not trying to be nitpicky, but in this particular case, there's serious questions and issues, and that would be my request to the body to please deny.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Burnson? I say thank you, Mr. Burnson. Was that a you're welcome? Thank you. Other members wishing to be recognized? Seeing none, we do have Mr. Zine's motion to deny this item. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tally the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, that is denied, and as Mr. Zine has said, expect this item to be returned to council. Mr. Clerk, next item, please. Item number 35, on session by council member Weiss, and there is a member in the public who wishes to be heard. Item 35 now before us. Council calls for Mr. Moore Allen on the item.
This is regarding the billboard on Wilshire and San Vicente. Unfortunately, John Carroll is supposed to meet me here, who, from Third Channel, he's not here yet, but let me just tell you the situation here. I don't know why this is coming before the council, but this is a case where Third Channel owns a billboard that's legally permitted on the building, and Shugnies has commandeered the boards, put up their own copy. And there's, it's in the courts now, they're trying to get legal control back on it, and they certainly support any actions the city can do to say that the board is obscene and illegal. But unfortunately, it's, they own the building, they purchased the building about six months ago and took over the board. So any help that the city attorney can do to try to get the copy down would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Allen disposes of public comment on item 35. Chair recognizes Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask of representatives from city attorney and building and safety to come to the table. Hold my time while we search for Mr. Khan. Going once. He is around. Well, we'll start with the city attorney, and hopefully, building and safety will reappear. The matter before us, colleagues, is, you know, who would have thought we would have to deal with a situation like this? But a company has put up a billboard in my district with a cartoon figure of a gentleman sitting on a toilet, and underneath that depiction is an obscenity. Now, this is at the corner of Wilshire Boulevard and San Vicente in West Los Angeles, but the billboard, interestingly enough, doesn't face down Wilshire Boulevard. The billboard faces down San Vicente into an exclusively residential neighborhood. So families, kids, senior citizens, everybody who lives in that community has to face this billboard every day. And the content is quite offensive. The content is demeaning to the community and disrupts the quality of life in that community. And I think we need to ask ourselves the following questions today. Number one, from Mr. Khan, can you tell us, is there anything about the permit history of this billboard or its permit status that gives us an option to go against the billboard? Secondly, from the city attorney's office, we have received a memo today outlining portions of law. I have a lot of legal questions about your memo, but I'd like you to explain why it is the city attorney's office's view that no legal case ought to be brought against this billboard on grounds of obscenity. And then number three, if that is indeed the conclusion of the city attorney's office, we all need to confront this basic fact. If this billboard can stand here in this residential neighborhood, it can be placed in any residential neighborhood in this city, and maybe we ought to explore if there is a legal means to do something about that, and I think there might be. So those are three questions. I'd ask Mr. Khan to start with number one, and Ms. Cartes with two and three, if you can hold my time.
Good morning. Dave Khan with the Department of Building and Safety. We investigated whether or not the sign structure itself was legally constructed, and through our research on the permits, we found that on November 13th, 1984, a permit was issued for this sign structure mounted on that roof. Subsequent to that, two years later, the city banned rooftop, or roof-mounted signs, generally speaking, but this one has a non-conforming right to be there, the structure itself. So it is a legally permitted sign structure, double-faced sign structure.
So what's your conclusion then?
It's a legally permitted double-sign rooftop structure that was built in 1984 with a permit.
And is there any salience as far as building and safety is concerned, as far as the permitting issue is concerned? An allegation has been raised that Company A acquired that permit and owns the billboard, leases the space from Company B. Company B has now denied Company A allegedly access to the billboard, and does that have any, if those facts were true, would it have any impact on your analysis?
No, council, it doesn't. That's a civil matter between the alleged sign owner, the property owner, et cetera. As far as we're concerned, from a legal point of view, this sign is a permitted sign regardless of who owns it or who controls it.
Perhaps you can clarify that. Do we have any protest on the part of the property owner with respect to it? Is he cooperating? Do we know any of those details at all, Mr. Khan?
Well, we haven't asked, Building and Safety has not asked the property owner to do anything with the sign. Our part of the investigation...
What is the property owner saying, if anything?
We haven't even spoke with the property owner.
What's the basis of saying that it's legally permitted?
Because it is a permitted sign, council. A permit was taken out in 1984 and has a right to exist at that location, in its current physical form, in terms of its size, height, location. Now, that's in terms of our LAMC. On a civil level, it may be different.
My question of Building and Safety, has there been any conversation with the owner?
With respect to, we haven't spoken with the owner, council, but we have had a...
Weiss, it seems to me that an investigation of some sort to determine not only the legality, but the legality of the propriety, short of any violation of civil liberties as would be established by the constitution. Is an order by Building and Safety, and we deserve feedback as to whether the letter of the law hasn't been applied with, because it is not clear to me that such is the case in the sense that it may not be the case, perhaps in the sense of, there's an opportunity to remedy this. There's a lot of rumor as to what did or did not go on, and I think our city departments are obliged to know factually what is going on, and we report out to the members of the council at a time of certain designation, Mr. President.
Can I respond? The councilman, as I said, the structure itself is permitted. In terms of whether or not the content is something that we can regulate, is we've been meeting with the city attorney and are going on their advice.
At the time, I'll repeat, it would seem to me it would do well if you deemed it appropriate in terms of scope of your authority to know specifically what happened in that instance.
I'm not sure I understand what instance you're talking about, Councilman.
The instance of this sign going up, when it did, when I'm talking structure, we need to get feedback, either Building and Safety, or the city attorney, or any other entity within the city, families that can cause us to find the information that we see.
Councilman, there's no provision in our Los Angeles municipal code that allows me to regulate content.
I'm asking you... When they change a kind, listen to my question. It is essentially to investigate, not regulate. Mr. Weiss has raised an issue of quality of life, and indeed posed the question of the propriety of what's there. Obviously, that's a contentious, there may be ways to address this issue short of getting in turn, getting into legal entanglements. I'm simply suggesting, Mr. President, that the Building and Safety Department and whoever else deemed appropriate, investigate what specifically happened there, so that the council can have a better handle on how we might take appropriate action, if at all. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Mr. Weiss seconds. Ms. Galanter?
I think it would be worth noting that it isn't always necessary to go through legalistic structures and the courts or the departments. We had a similar problem in my district, not very far from this, actually, not long ago, in which a billboard went up that the community and I found very offensive, and we were able to basically browbeat the advertiser into taking it down. This didn't require Building and Safety, but we did all that. The billboard was perfectly legal, and the sign, in fact, was perfectly legal, but because the community was willing to call the advertiser, my office called the advertiser, the people who objected, the homeowners associations, everybody called the advertiser, and basically made the life of the advertiser a living hell until they changed the billboard, which they eventually did. It didn't happen as quickly as it might have if the billboard had been illegal, but there are many ways to go about getting rid of an offensive billboard, and in the time it would take for Building and Safety or the city attorney to do any kind of an investigation, and the communities in the area that Mr. Weiss is talking about are very effective in this kind of thing. If given the proper phone number of the advertiser, they can, they can do a very effective job. And I do not say that to say we shouldn't crack down on illegal billboards, of course we should crack down on illegal ones, but where they are legal but offensive, there are other methods for letting the people who are making money off it know that the community doesn't like it, and I certainly, many of the homeowners groups who were involved in the billboard in my district are momentarily going to be Mr. Weiss's constituents, and I know they would be more than happy to help you in this. I think that you can do a great deal without Building and Safety, without the legality, the legal issues, just by, basically filling their phones with complaints from the people who are offended by this. It's been known to work before, and I'm sure it will work again.
President, I think Ms. Galanter speaks from the Venice point of experience and wisdom, and I would simply want to suggest that what she just indicated is hardly to contradict what I'm suggesting. They are complimentary, and it would seem to me that both can proceed simultaneously. I would think that there is a city agency that ought to be on point, Mr. Weiss, that comes back to your office or to the body as a whole to deal with it, and if there is grassroots organizing that complements that, all the better. Mr. Pacheco, followed by Ms. Skalkowski and Mr. Burnson.
Mr. President, colleagues, First Amendment and First Amendment issues are always difficult because we all believe in Stanford First Amendment of human expression. And if I understand the right times correctly, this is a Death Row Records advertisement and Death Row Records, which is very popular in the community, and always does some controversial cutting edge. I think most of their records have the parental advisory label on them, you know, that urban rap music. But I think one of the basic things I wanted to ask for was, does anyone have a picture of what we're talking about? Because before I can decide... All right, can you, can we circulate it, or is it, email it to me or something? Before I can decide what my position is, I want to see what we're talking about, and yet maybe there's a way of dealing with it informally, because I know that I also have used the same practice that Ms. Galanter has identified, where we had some adult gentleman clubs advertisements in inappropriate locations, and we called the advertiser, and we called the company, and so they were more than willing to relocate that advertisement. So maybe we should try that first, maybe Councilor Weiss could call Death Row Records and work with them, and see if they'd be willing to accommodate his request to relocate this sign somewhere else, and then I'll get back to you after I review the material. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Skalkowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. One, I want to thank the city attorney for responding quickly. I have read this, and I don't know that we've had the city attorney tell us your review, and maybe we should go over that and hold my time for a minute, so I'd like the city attorney to tell us your, what is in your letter, essentially, to summarize it.
Mr. President, Honorable Members, Sheriff Seedorf Cartes, Assistant City Attorney. Based upon the motion that was put in by Councilmember Weiss, we are reporting back to this body regarding the sign that's located at Wilshire and San Vicente. At the outset, let me say that for the most part, our sign ordinance does not regulate content. The only time that we regulate content is that obscene signs are prohibited. And basically, those are tied to the state of California Penal Code, Section 311. In looking at the cases that have interpreted that section, and also United States Supreme Court precedent, we have determined, and if I can find the quote, that basically, whether it's the depiction or the words on it, that... What the court said was that for either words or a picture to be obscene, there has to be a sexual content. Just using a four-letter word by itself, or a depiction of someone sitting on a toilet, absent a sexual connotation would not be considered obscene. And therefore, it was our conclusion, after looking at the picture of the sign and going through the case law, that a court would not find this particular sign content to qualify as obscene.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. That is pretty clear, and often we have concerns with some city attorney letters, which leave a little bit of area of gray, or say, well, it's not quite clear. This one doesn't say that. This one says, you've looked at it, you've looked at the court cases, and that you believe that the court would not find this sign in question obscene, and that therefore, the city attorney is speaking, we cannot enforce our ordinance against this sign. I appreciated the efforts that Mr. Weiss first presented with the question of Building and Safety, and is the sign itself legal? And Mr. Khan also answered that very succinctly, saying, yes, the sign is legal. It would not be allowed today as a rooftop structure, but it was allowed when it went in. There are no occurrences, no enlargements, no things like that, that would be under our sign's control that give us that latitude. I also want to echo what Ms. Galanter said. I think the billboard question is one of them, and there's another story where it's very similar, where the pressure for the community wasn't on the advertisers, the pressure on the community was on the building owner, where they said, do you want something like this on your building? And isn't it terrible? And the building owner not being a person who saw this building very often, took a look at the billboard that the community was raising, and said, yes, I'm going to have it changed. So there have been efforts and times when the community pressure really is what it comes down to, and was very, very effective. I think we have to accept what the city attorney said. Is the sign offensive? Yes, as people are looking at it, people will find it various, to various degrees offensive. Is it more offensive because, given this double-faced billboard, there's a sign that affects and affects Wilshire Boulevard and car, which is actually blocked by the building itself, and would that have been a preferable place to put it, as opposed to the approach on San Vicente, which goes south, a single-family community? That would have been preferable. Is the issue of dispute...
Is the issue of dispute between the civil owners of building, the owner of the sign, the billboard companies, the dispute between the two billboard companies an issue that we should be involved in? I think not. I think were we to interfere and attempt to interfere, we would potentially putting the city out there involving ourselves in a potential liability issue that we ought not, can't afford and ought not to get involved in. Again, I think the best effort here is community pressure on one hand and on the other hand is very often folks like this exactly what billboards want, made you look, made you react, made you have more press, made you have just more focus on this, is sort of literally to turn our back to the sign. I think not getting involved, not letting this rise to another level of issues which the city attorneys tell us and building and safety are telling us that we have no strong legal ground and just create more of a threshold. And we're going to invite in members of the council, all of those civil liberties groups, all those who strongly believe, right or wrong, on this particular issue, but really very rightly on the First Amendment. I have something here sitting on my desk which has often guided me on these issues. It says, "First Amendment issues are always unpopular." That's why we need a First Amendment. That is a quote from Floyd Abrams, a longstanding civil rights attorney, civil liberties attorney, who fought for the rights of freedom of speech. And I think that has to guide us here, particularly since this doesn't in any way even from the city attorney's office, give us the latitude of coming close to an area where it's worth fighting and worth really, really precipitating. I think that's what has to guide us and that's why I would, I don't think there's a motion before us other than accepting this report from the city attorney, but that's what I would cautiously advise the council members to do.
Thank you, Ms. Miskowski, for calling the next speaker. Public hearing has been open and closed, but we do have John Carroll from Clear Channel here.
I'd move to reopen so we can just say a few words before we continue with council discussion. Mr. Carroll.
Thank you, Mr. President, Honorable Members. My name is John Carroll. I'm the real estate manager for Clear Channel Outdoor here in Los Angeles. We just want to let you know that the sign contents on top of the building here at San Vicente and Wilshire are not ours. They are the Lessor's with Death Row Record. We are in the middle of a least dispute with them and they actually physically took down the ad copy we had up there and have taken the signs over for their own use. Our attorneys are dealing currently with their attorneys to currently solve our least dispute. We want to let you know that we would never condone this type of advertising. We have our own internal codes that we would not put something like this on the streets ourselves and we support any actions that the city council may take to get the ad copy that's currently up there down. And I can tell you that if we are unable to resolve our dispute with the landowner, we will be removing the signs that are prior to entire structures from the roof. At the moment, we're hoping we're able to negotiate a settlement with them that will allow us to continue our tenancy and that is the status of where we're at with this whole situation.
Thank you very much. Chair recognizes Mr. Burns.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, I appreciate the comments just made by the representatives and I think they're very appropriate and obviously, there are a number of issues here, one of which we have no control, which is the First Amendment issue. But I would like to ask, Dave, could you tell us, when was our ordinance put into effect that prohibited rooftops?
1986.
1986, so this preceded it, so it was a legal structure in the West.
About two years have preceded it, Councilman, therefore it has a non-conforming right as many rooftop signs.
Yeah, I understand. Now, I, not in this case, but we've already been told by the company that they will remove the structure if necessary and I appreciate that because that's the right thing to do. But as you know, or maybe some of you don't know, there is a state law that protects the industry and gives them amortization when signs are removed without their permission or without their consent. And I was just wondering whether our nuisance laws could apply if you throw out the First Amendment motion and not have it for First Amendment reasons, but for other reasons, we have the ability to impose nuisance abatement measures in land use cases. I don't know that it's ever been tested on the case of an amortization of a billboard and this probably wouldn't be the right case anyway because it involves First Amendment rights. But it'd be an interesting topic that we might in the future, you know, there was a time when conditional use permits could not be revoked until we offered an ordinance that allowed us to revoke conditional use permits if we could make the findings that they were contrary to the public interest. And I'm just wondering whether we might explore in the future on some of these where people are not as cooperative as the gentleman has offered to be here and we do appreciate that by the way and I think it's the right thing to do. Have you suggested to the company that they should remove this? Just give me a yes or no, have you? And they refused?
Well, yes, the Death Row Records.
Have you suggested to them that you will not honor any of their future business if they don't?
Yes, we have had those recommendations.
And they still, they're still adamant about it, huh?
Yeah, they're pretty obstinate.
Do you intend to keep your promise and not take future business from them?
Yes, we do.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This is a question for building and safety, possibly Clear Channel. The gentleman from Clear Channel indicated that the Lessor took down their copy, their copy, Clear Channel's copy and put up their own. And my question to you is, is that an activity that they could conduct without approval or some sort of clearance or permit or review by building and safety just to remove copy and put up?
Yes, Councilmember, the answer is that changes of copy on off-site signs such as these do not require permit or any approval process whatsoever. We do not regulate change of copy itself. We regulate the initial permitting, inspection of the billboards and maintain their size, location, et cetera, but we do not regulate copy changes.
Okay, so I'm talking about the actual physical act of changing it, not what the content is?
Yeah, no permit is required to change the copy and no approval process is required to change a copy on a billboard.
Well, I have many of the same problems that Mr. Weiss has unfortunately in the Ninth Council District and I'm looking for an expeditious way of approaching this and if there's some way to find that they haven't conformed to a process or gotten proper review, I hope that you will consider those issues when conducting your investigation as directed.
Mr. Zine. Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. So what has been done in this case? They hijacked the billboard. They hijacked the billboard. They went out and removed what was on the billboard and put what they want on the billboard against the wishes of Clear Channel which owns the billboard. There must be some sections in trespassing, there must be some sections in the code that that is illegal to take down what a company is paid for and owns and there's ownership rights. And what happens around the city if individuals decide to remove what's on the billboard that's being paid for by the advertiser and put up their own advertisement, whatever it be, whether it's a good taste or bad taste, there must be some section somewhere in some code, a trespassing section, a vandalism section of something that can be done to remove this. Well, it's theft of what was up there, but in essence, Death Row Records, you take the name Death Row Records and you wonder what they're up to and they hijack a billboard and we look into the books and look into the arena of constitutional protections and rights and there's constitutional protection rights for the owners of that billboard. And as Ms. Galanter said, have the community up in arms, well, who are they going to complain to? Because people on the billboard don't want it up there. This is a hijacked billboard and I don't know how often this happens to be. Mr. Carroll can answer. Has this ever happened before where someone's hijacked the billboard?
Very rarely, but it has. We've been able to impress upon them that that's not the way to go about it and they don't have the right to properly. We actually have removed the copy of the old ads that were up there and put up Beverly Hills Tourism that we had contracted for and they turned around two days and removed that ad copy and put up the new ones right now that are causing all the problems.
Well, I know that there's got to be some section, maybe our city attorney can answer, in the penal code that would apply to vandalism or trespassing or some section, because if someone's putting up another advertisement on billboard and they fall and they hurt themselves and they sue Clear Channel and they're going to say, well, Clear Channel was liable because they didn't have the safety mechanism up there. I just can't believe that we remain helpless when they're putting this billboard up against the wishes of the owner and they're not being cooperative and it's not like they're being good business people and friendly to the community. It is an outrage. They're getting massive publicity. I've seen it on television. I've read it in the newspaper and here it is in city council and I just can't believe that a city of four million people has to sit idly by and say, this is okay. There's got to be some section somewhere that permits the city to go in, permits the owner to go in and remove it with no harm to their crew that has to go in that facility and remove that billboard. So they're not jeopardized. Ms. City Attorney, can you respond to some of those issues, please? Thank you, Ms. Zine.
Councilmember Zine, I am, I'm not very familiar with criminal law because I don't practice in that area. However, if Clear Channel believes that its rights have been violated either by way of theft or vandalism or something like that, they can certainly make a report to the Los Angeles Police Department who would investigate, determine whether they felt a crime was committed and then could refer depending on whether it's a felony or misdemeanor crime to either the district attorney or our office of prosecution.
Okay, I would ask that, Mr. Carroll, if you will complete a report with the Los Angeles Police Department to that effect and we can bring in the penal code and bring in the criminal prosecution, whether we know who did it or not, then you can reclaim property rights to that billboard and get that removed. Maybe that might be the most expeditious way. Are you going to do that?
Yes, we are.
That sounds like an amended motion. Ms. Zine, is there a second? There's a second? But we can consider that report back along with Mr. Ridley Thomas' suggestion as well. Ms. Groll.
I have a question as well and I don't know if it's for the representative of Clear Channel or not. I mean, the question that we've all raised and if, that they've put this up, whether you agree with the content of it, I think actually is not necessarily as much the issue of putting it up when it is your billboard that they cannot, that you own. Can you not go up and take it down right now?
Well, we have and they have gone ahead and put back up our copy. The other issue is that it's tough to access this building. They have guns and armed guards and they've been given pretty strict orders about allowing the property and if someone's there does not have permission to get them off.
But it's your billboard.
Yes, it's on their property.
But there's some, I mean, I guess agreement that you must have a contract with the owner that if, because you're putting up the billboard, you go on all the time.
That's true. That particular agreement has though been terminated and so we're in the process of, we were in the process of negotiating with them for a renewal and that fell apart about three weeks ago when we thought we had a deal put together. As far as their rights to use, they don't have rights to use the billboard, it is our property. And one thing I would point out, they don't have a license to operate it as an off-premise sign and exceeds on-premise signage square footage, so they're in violation, you decide the way they want to claim that board.
So it's their property, but it's your billboard and they won't allow you access to your own billboard?
That's correct.
And there's no legal recourse you have?
It's a civil matter and so our attorneys are currently getting involved with this on a civil side of it.
Councilmember, this is a civil dispute which often happens between two parties where property is involved and it sounds like they both are represented by attorneys.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can I, Mr. Carroll, if I could ask you to, it's like the popcorn factory, do you could just clarify for us exactly why it is that Clear Channel is unable to change the copy? Just one more time so we can hear you crystal clear. Save my time.
Okay. The signs are located on the roof of the building. It's about a four-story building. The only way you can get to the roof is through the building or through cranes lifting men up in man-basses to the roof. The owners have armed guards 24 hours around the clock of that building with specific instructions as to whom may and may not enter the property and as a result, they will chase our crews away and...
Have in fact your crews been chased away?
Yes, we've been having...
And were they in fact chased away by armed individuals?
Yes, they were.
Did they actually see the weapons on the individuals?
I don't know for sure. That's my understanding.
Well, I appreciate that, Mr. Carroll and colleagues. I have to tell you two things. One, I greatly appreciate the comments of so many of you during this debate. It's been a terrific debate. I want particularly to say, Ms. Galanter, your comments earlier were just absolutely right on point and I really appreciate that. I appreciate the support of everybody in this chamber who recognizes that if they can do this here in the Fifth District, they can do it anywhere. And if armed, if armed guards are going to be used to scare away a billboard company from changing what is patently a grossly offensive billboard, then with all due respect to my colleagues, I do not think we should take the city attorney's report at face value. I think we ought to investigate every option we have because if this is the way people are going to behave in this city, we need to respond appropriately in a way they understand. So I have many questions regarding the legal report that's been presented today and perhaps what I'll do is I will discuss those offline with the city attorney's office because, well, I'll just, I'll just tell you briefly, Ms. Carter, each and every one of the cases that is cited in this brief, each and every case is distinguishable. Baker deals with one word on a bumper sticker. Turner deals with 5402, not 311. And 5402, by the way, has not been found unconstitutional. One clause of 5402 has been found unconstitutional, not the entire section, not the entire statute and not the part of the statute dealing with obscenity, permanent political speech. Raisales and Pacho deal with nudity alone. So those cases are distinguishable. I do think we may have ultimately a problem legally, which is that our city code section incorporates Section 311 by reference and Section 311 on its face seems to limit obscenity to prurient interest matters, to sexual content. I do not believe that the law of the United States limits obscenity to sexual content. Let me ask you that briefly, hold my time. Do you believe the law of the United States limits obscenity strictly to sexual erotic and pornographic materials?
Yes, I do.
Do you have a, do you have a United States Supreme Court case that says that?
I don't have it here, but yes, I look at some United States Supreme Court cases.
Okay. I'm not certain that that's correct and I actually think under Laura Lard versus Riley, we have an opportunity here to craft perhaps a narrowly tailored statute that could address issues of obscenity on billboards when they are in close proximity to residential neighborhoods, schools, religious institutions and so on. And so I would ask that we not receive and file this report right now because I think it raises more questions than it answers. I'd like to ask the city attorney's office if they can prepare, perhaps they should do it for the plump committee rather than for full council, Mr. President, a report that looks, looks at the, at the type of laws that were challenged in Laura Lard and asks the question, can we craft a narrowly tailored ordinance here? Because any ordinance here, as you know, Ms. Carter, will be subject to strict scrutiny, but I think you can overcome strict scrutiny conceivably if you tailor your ordinance to signs that are residential communities, near churches, near schools, so on and so forth. I think we can come up with such an ordinance. I'd like to see a report from the city attorney's office that doesn't just simply shut the door on us, but tells us which doors might be open and where we might have an opportunity. Doesn't tell us, the cases have said you can't do this, but indicates where the case law suggests an opening. I think we need to look at that and I think we need to take Mr. Ridley Thomas's suggestion in heart and have building and safety go out, maybe with the LAPD if need be, and do an inspection of this location because after all, you're going to have to do an inventory anyway. We can't let people with billboards and guns intimidate this city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Mr. Zine. Thank you, Mr. President. Just to follow up on that, the constitution and the guarantees of freedom of rights, that's the broad scale. We're talking about one billboard at one location in the city of Los Angeles that has been hijacked by Death Row Records people. And while they have the right to have armed guards on premises to protect their properties, I don't believe they have the right to prevent a billboard company from maintaining their particular billboard. And for this to linger on for months through the litigation of the civil attorneys, which I'm sure it will, there's a civil aspect, there's a criminal aspect. And what I see is a criminal aspect where a criminal act was done, whether it was trespassing or vandalism or something else, that was done in this particular case. And while Councilor Weiss's motion would bring forth an umbrella for the city for billboards and good taste, et cetera, I totally support that, but I think we need to address in this particular case what we're going to do about this particular bill. billboard, this particular location and to remove that as quickly as possible and to assist Clear Channel and their employees to have that happen. What happens when it's taken down and then Death Row puts something else up and the controversy continues? I don't know. But what we need to address is not the long-term solution, but the short-term solution. And Mr. Carroll said he's going to make a police report. That will start the wheels churning, but at the same time, building and safety needs to do what they have to do. And if the police department needs to assist you in that activity, then so be it. And we just can't sit idly by while we get in the mogo jumbo of legalese. And that's what's going to happen, is it will go through the legalese of the civil attorneys and for months this will linger. So I would say when Mr. Carroll makes that report today, process that with the city attorney with the criminal branch and take action to do what we have to do and get it done as quickly as possible. Because it's one location today and if we ignore it and we don't take action promptly, we'll have locations throughout the city before we can blink.
Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, I would simply say that I've looked at the billboard and I agree that it's offensive and I would not want it in my neighborhood. The challenge we have before us is that we're bumping up against a very powerful shield, which is called the First Amendment. I understand what you're saying, Dennis, about people using arms and different things to protect their interests, whether it be commercial, financial, whatever. But I think, I just want to make sure that before we do anything, that we don't just, you know, walk all over the First Amendment and treat it lightly or disregard it. And so as we move this forward, I think we should have some of the stakeholders in the civil liberties area, the ACLU or the different groups out there who deal with this more regularly to help us review this matter because I agree with you, it's maybe not, it is not, I say, I agree with everyone, it's not the most appealing imagery that I want to see in any neighborhood. But I think we run into this First Amendment issue and I just want to make sure that we don't come across as if we're against the First Amendment. So whatever we do, I just want to make sure we, we have a balanced approach with the First Amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Members, we do have a request by Councilmember Zine, a amending motion and suggestion by Councilmember Ridley Thomas for a report back and Mr. Weiss's suggestion that this matter not be received and filed, but actually referred to the Plumb Committee for further discussion. And I believe that is appropriate venue for the report backs and the requests for information that have been made.
And they're all friendly amendments, Mr. President.
They're all friendly amendments. So let's take a vote on approving the amendments and information requested and in the same stroke, refer the entire matter to the Plumb Committee for further discussion. Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Mr. President, not on the agenda, Special One is submitted by Councilmember Padilla, seconded by Councilmember Pacheco. And the city attorney will speak to the need to make findings. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. There were allegations through Cultural Affairs Department for festivals and programs for the year 2001, 2002 because of the September 11th events. Many of these events, the funded events, were canceled. The Controller has just informed the council office that they need, that there is a council instruction need for specific accounts and fund numbers to transfer this money before the end of the fiscal year and therefore the council would need to make the findings that the need to act arose after the posting of the agenda and that there's an immediate need to act.
Members wishing to be heard on the findings? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Special One now before us. Members wishing to be heard on the motion itself? Seeing none, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Thank you, members. For quick, please. Next item. Mr. President, also not on agenda, Special Two. It is a resolution that's submitted by Councilmember Lavange, seconded by Mr. Burnson. And Mr. Lavange is going to speak to the need to make findings. Mr. Lavange.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, as you may have learned just in the last few days, discussion is taking on in Washington concerning the discontinuance of Amtrak and to change drastically how rail service feeds Los Angeles. As you may or may not know, there's three long country trains, long, across the country trains through Chicago comes the Southwest Limited, the Sunset Limited to New Orleans and also the Coast Starlight to Seattle. Long-haul trains are very important people of our city who need an opportunity to travel and travel by train. This motion that is before you, resolution calls on the Congress to act on behalf of Amtrak. And I believe that it will stop shutting down, which is scheduled to be tomorrow. We need to act today in this behalf. And I would like to ask that we move to determine that this is a motion worthy of consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson. Members wishing to be heard on the findings? Mr. Burnson.
Yes, members of the council, this is a very important issue because we are threatened with the loss of not just our Amtrak service, which is extremely important throughout the country, but it also affects MetroLink. MetroLink, which services 35,000 riders a day in the Los Angeles basin or the region, which includes five counties, actually six counties, would also be shut down because of the fact that we contract with Amtrak for the engineers and conductors and signal people that we use in our service. So it's a drastic matter. I mean, Amtrak is, you know, only services 60,000 people nationwide on a daily basis. That's all, 60,000 nationwide. But MetroLink services 35,000 people daily right here in our basin. And you can imagine the impact of 35,000 more cars on our freeway, not to mention those that can't afford an automobile and depend upon public transportation. This is a very critical matter. We hope that MetroLink and Amtrak will continue. Obviously, MetroLink is doing everything within its power to try to continue service even if Amtrak does shut down. We are in the process now of contacting the unions pursuant to an emergency contract with the engineers, conductors and signal people so that we can continue should, should Amtrak make their threat complete. We've been assured by Secretary of Transportation Manetta that they will do everything possible. They expect to keep that rolling, we hope. But just in fact, we did issue a news release yesterday from MetroLink, in fact, that's here for those of you that may be... And I just want to make everybody, let everybody know that contrary to some of the things that have been carried on television, that MetroLink will automatically shut down. It says as follows, "The uncertainty of Amtrak's financial situation has left a number of our MetroLink passengers wondering what will happen to MetroLink service if Amtrak shuts down. First thing I want to do is to assure our passengers that we're doing everything possible to avoid any interruption in our MetroLink service. In a statement earlier today, Secretary of Transportation Normanetta said, 'I am confident we will be able to avoid a shutdown of services.'" Well, we hope that's true, but Congress is going to have to do something in order to fund Amtrak in the future. The hope was that it would be self-sufficient after a number of years. But let's be realistic, there is no transportation, rail transportation or bus transportation service in the country that is self-sustaining. It's all subsidized. We spend billions of dollars on freeways and road improvements every year. We call those investments. Well, the transportation, we call that subsidies. You know, somewhere in there, there's an inequity, if you understand where I'm going with this. So I would urge that we immediately contact our representatives in Washington, D.C. and urge them to approve immediately a $200 million funding to keep Amtrak in business after tomorrow and then to work out some sort of a permanent arrangement so that Amtrak can continue to service the people of our country and enable us to continue servicing the Southern California basin with MetroLink service. So I would, I want to thank Mr. Lavange for bringing this to the council's attention.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson. Mr. Lavange, let's take a vote on the findings. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
We now have the motion before us. Mr. Lavange.
Call for everybody's support on this very important thing and ask for a friendly amendment from Mr. Burnson on the MetroLink issue as it relates to the county-wide systematic contracts with, region-wide. Region-wide, thank you.
Let's open the roll on the items amended. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Special Two is approved. For quick, please. Next item.
Mr. President, now it's time for comment on non-agenda items. Council call for Phil Tabak. Are you still with us? If not, then the public comment period for today's meeting is closed. Next item, please. Motion's opposed in referral. Motion shall be posted and referred. Councilmembers' requests for excused in council attendance. Councilmember Weiss requests for excused on June 26th for city business. A motion is required. Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. Weiss is excused. Councilmember Glanter requests for excuse on July 12th for city business. This meets policy. Ms. Glanter is excused.
Councilmember Zine requests for excuse on July 2nd to arrive late for city business. This also meets policy.
Ms. Zine is excused.
And Councilmember Burnson requests for excuse on June 26th to leave early for city business. A motion is required. Mr. Weiss moves. Mr. Burnson is excused. The desk is clear. Any announcements? Seeing none, please write for turning votes. Mr. Burnson.
Yes, members of the council, I'm very sad to request adjournment for Sarah Rogers of our planning department, who passed away on Sunday, June 23rd. Sarah worked to join the planning department in 1969 as a clerk's sonographer and through her ability and perseverance rose to the position of associate zoning administrator. Good judgment, dedication and fairness to and justice oppressed everyone she worked with. Her passing is a great loss to all of us. Her family will let us know funeral arrangements. In the meantime, is accepting visitors and notes at 3755 Floresta Way, Los Angeles, 90043. They also wanted us to know of the special kindness and help several members of the department gave in Sarah's last months. And I must tell you that having worked with her over the years and I'm sure that Cindy, we all appreciate Sarah and her cooperation and kindness and the way she went about her business of helping do the city's business and our, our business, she'll be really missed. She's survived by her husband Daryl and his son Alan Wright. Also, I regret to request adjournment for Antoinette Chalokian, who passed away on June 9th, 2002. She is the mother of Ed Chalokian, who is extremely active in the 12th District in the Silmarc community, very active in police support and other types of activities. And she's survived by two sons, one of which is Ed and four grandchildren. Thank you.
Ms. Glanter.
Thank you. I'd like to, I have two. I'd first like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Helen Cassie, who was 78 years old and died after a year-long battle with leukemia. She's survived by three children, three grandchildren and two great-grandchildren. One of her children is Mary Belle Richard of the Venice Family Clinic and the family has requested that in lieu of flowers, donations be made to the Venice Family Clinic. It's been a rough year for Mary and I'm sure for the rest of the family as well, including Mrs. Cassie. Then I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Florence Georgine Davis, who was the mother of George Cunningham, who writes the Cunningham Report on the harbor, on harbor issues. She passed away on Friday, just two weeks shy of her 84th birthday. I'll get you the pertinent details.
Any others? Ms. Kowski.
I would just like to be a co-presenter on the Sarah Rogers tribute and also that Sarah was one of the people in the longstanding tradition in the planning department had been that you couldn't become a city planner unless you had gone to college, graduated and had an advanced degree. And over the years, there were many outstanding employees in the planning department who had started as clerk typists and who rose through the clerical positions and other administrative positions, whose talents were so recognized that the planning department actually and the personnel department actually made a change in the personnel qualifications for becoming a city planner to being just years of experience of working and being able to prove themselves and pass the test. And that those changes were made so that Sarah and a few others like her, who were so valuable in the department, could actually become city planners and recognize their capabilities. And she not only became a city planner in, in that change that occurred, but also continued to advance and test against city planners who had academic background and had the master's degree and excelled and rose to a senior level in the, in the planning department as a consequence of that. So she will be sorely missed. She was a, a real treasurer in the planning department, not only in terms of her knowledge, but in terms of her skills and working with the community people and the public.
Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, I said we adjourn in memory of Anita Ward. Anita was part of a group by the northeast part of Los Angeles known as the Golden Girls. She passed away on Sunday, June 23rd to cancer. Anita was born in Lincoln Heights, moved to Alserino in 1950 when she was married. She was an active community member since 1960, particularly with the schools and the different community organizations in the Alserino area. She's survived by her spouse Dean Ward, her son Manuel, her stepchildren Dean, Gail and Sherry, her sister Carmen Assolino, one of the other Golden Girls.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Mr. Ridley Thomas asked me to also do this on his behalf for Sarah Rogers and I just have some additional notes from him, that she was the first woman of color to become an associate zoning administrator. And this additional note indicates that her funeral is set for this Saturday at 11 o'clock at Inglewood Cemetery. And the co-presenter on that, well, Ed Ray is, I guess we're all going on it anyway, correct?
Yes. All members. Any others? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.
You are watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
We now join our scheduled program in progress.